Of the select board for February 22, 2022. Also, there's 2222 for those who are interested. We have Marcus Nelson joining us via Zoom. And I'll wait just a couple of moments while we populate as we just started recording. Okay, while we wait, is Marcus available? Not yet. Okay, while we wait for Marcus and I will note his attendance when he appears. First item of the agenda is our public comment period. We have not been notified of any public comments this evening, which moves us to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing ever source grant of location 34 Stratford Road. Ms. Calendar, ever source representative will also be joining us via Zoom. And I do see her name.
Good evening.
Calendar, how are you?
I'm fantastic. How are you?
It's nice to finally put a name to the face. I think prior the computer wasn't working and once you're in the car. So it's nice to see you face to face this evening.
Thank you. It's nice to be seen.
Great. So you're here on two public hearings. We're going to start with the first one, which is the grant of location 34 Stratford Road. And I turn it over to you, Ms. Calendar.
Yes, thank you. So ever source is seeking a granted location to provide approximately 15 feet of conduit into Windsor Road to provide service to 34 Stratford Road.
Great. Thank you. Kate, is everything in order?
Yes.
Great. Everything is in order. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none on Zoom, is there anyone in attendance here in the hall who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the select board approve and sign a petition from ever source energy to install approximately 15 feet of conduit in Windsor Road.
There are some motions. There are second. Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Calendar. Next item on the agenda, grant of location 71 Lindberg.
Yes. Thank you. Ever source is seeking a grand location to install approximately 66 feet of conduit into Lindberg Avenue. And that is provide service to the customer at 71 Lindberg Avenue.
Thank you. Is this in order?
Yes.
Great. The application is in order. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone attendee on Zoom who wishes to speak to this hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone in attendance in the hall who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board approve and sign a petition from our source energy to install approximately 66 feet of conduit in Lindberg Avenue.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Ms. Calendar, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. You all do the same. See you next time.
Thank you.
Bye now.
I see the next public hearing is noticed at 6:10. What time do we have? 6:07. Okay. Thank you. Seeing that both we have a 6:10 and a 6:20. Is there a motion for the consent agenda approved, the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? I will note that there is an approval here for ARPA grant awards. And we did have businesses apply for small businesses, local businesses, apply for grant awards, and we did issue those. And thank you very much for those who applied. We are unsure if there is going to be a second round. That'll be a topic of further discussion. But it's nice to help out and use those funds for these need and businesses that need them very much.
How many applicants?
We'll have an update under my agenda.
Great. Okay, that's I didn't want to steal your thunder. So we will, we will get to that at that time. So terrific news. So great. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, if I might, on the consent.
Yes.
There's an amazing event that was postponed from 2020. Is that right? Where Parker Mac is helping to sponsor a walk between Needham and Arlington on April 9. And so that is finally going to go forward two years later. It is, select board member Keen is very much involved in the development of the plan. And I'm going to try to sign up for that walk. Is it 12 miles? Is that right? 12.6. So we'll see you there.
That's great. I will see you there. Thank you for organizing that, Mr. Keen. That's terrific. Oh, and I see Marcus is here. Hi, Marcus, how are you?
Good, good. Nice to see you all.
Great to see you. We are just waiting. We have a 6:10 public hearing that's been noticed. It is 6:06. Kate, is there anything that you can briefly discuss?
Absolutely.
Great.
One of the items for the board's consideration is the discussion of the April calendar.
Okay.
And one of the items the board had discussed in your discussions of your goals is whether to hold the meeting on the day after the election. And my understanding of that conversation was it would really depend on the year and the number of people running for vacant seats and whether there was opportunity for them to catch up to speed. It's, there is currently one person running. Everyone who has, would be running has had access. We've had more, based on the board's feedback, we've had a lot more information that we've provided to candidates who are running. So just wanted to make sure you wanted to keep the meeting on the Wednesday in April. And also, leading up to town meeting, it's often the case that we need an extra meeting in April and would ask whether the board could hold April 5th for an additional meeting. There's another meeting later that night. So it would have to be a short meeting in case anything needed to get signed or something like that. So just looking for feedback on that April 13th meeting.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I think, as you stated, we discussed, it is a year by year discussion we should have as far as when that date comes. And we have, I hope, I know we have done a better job of getting materials to candidates. And I think as far as just having the calendar function the way it has, that we should, I think those are two good suggestions to have that select board meeting on the 13th and then to hold that on the 5th, but open to discussion on this item. Marcus.
Yes, yes. I would say for the 13th, maybe we, maybe consider talking to the potential candidate if there's only one. I know for the most part, it seems like Heidi's been following along and been at most of our meetings, which has been great. But you know, from past experience, it may be beneficial for us to think about, you know, holding it off another week. But that's also depend on the comfortability. But I would also say on the 5th, I know I won't be in town on the 5th. So I don't know if I'll be able to make that meeting on April 5th. I didn't know that was, I know that's something we're discussing, right?
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Correct. Any other, Mary Ann?
Well, I think the town manager indicated that she has spoken to the candidate.
Not specifically about the date. I will do that, but certainly about lots of other.
Okay. Okay. And I'd prefer to have that unless there's an extenuating circumstance that the 13th doesn't work. And as far as the 5th, we can talk about that date at another time. But okay, thank you for that, Marcus.
Yep.
Any further discussion? 6:10 on the nose. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, alteration of premises for an all alcohol license in a restaurant, Soul Soul Family Foods doing business as Hearth Pizzeria. Ivan, if you may approach on this application. Nice to see you. Ivan Milan, Lucio, the manager of a terrific establishment here in Needham.
Thank you.
Yes. So the floor is yours, just to give us a brief understanding of what the application is. We do have the information in front of us as well.
So we're requesting to grant access to our patio, to have it legally binding, you know, that we can sell liquor outside and provide an atmosphere there on a year round basis with the winter months and weather permitting availability to do so.
That is terrific. Can you just give us an idea? How has business been and how has the outdoor dining been? Just give us a bit of an understanding of that.
For my personal experience, I can really do a comparison right now to what the outdoor dining was doing to us, just going into the December months, January and February so far. It's been spotty for us to try to fill up the dining room. There has been takeout during the months that we did have the patio. We knew for sure that we were having access out there. Folks were having a good time there.
That's terrific. Questions for applicant. It's cool.
I just wonder if it's worthwhile explaining to the public that this is the first of what will be a process for us. We have enjoyed outdoor dining at a number of establishments in town. But in fact, as we normalize coming out of the pandemic, we'll no longer be under special legislation from the state that permitted us to do that. So this is part of a process of going to the ABCC and getting the premises recertified. So this outdoor space also can be used, that people can enjoy an alcoholic beverage there and just getting everything redefined in the new system. So I just want to be clear about, thank you to Ivan to come before us. But that is the purpose of these hearings.
Great. Thank you for that, Ms. Cooley. And you know, our board in the town wants to support businesses just like yours. And I think with COVID and the outdoor dining, really had people moving quickly to adapt to that. And I think to have the predictability of, you know, I see it here, 650 square foot patio area. It's great for the patrons and hopefully it's great for you as a business as well. So love what you're doing and I think I wish you the best of luck as we move forward with this. Yes, Mr. Mathis.
The question, which to a certain extent is not relevant, but I, it may be someday. So this is a great plan and wish you all the best with it. And you've been really responsible and done a good job. My, my thinking right now is historically, there was tremendous amount of demand for parking spaces downtown. And that was always, everything was tight down in the single space. And of course, some of these areas that we're going to use for this, you're going to use for this are nominally available public parking spaces. But right now, demand is way down because of really the things that have happened because of both the public health situation and because the whole retail environment in places like this is different than now than it was two years ago. But I'm now thinking, I'm thinking a little further down the road. When we talk about the idea that we really think that it would be a good thing, that some of those retail chain uses, they may find new homes. Things may come back. There may be more parking demand for business. And also, we're talking a lot about finding ways to encourage more apartments to be built downtown. My whole area that you're in there is owned for three and four floors, but it doesn't get built because one of the things, because among other things, the developers, it's too expensive for them to build parking. But the town historically has been a provider of parking, including that big lot that's out behind the area that you're working in. So I'm asking the question, if sometime further down the road, the town were to talk about, why don't we build a parking structure out there? And I'm not trying to worry any of my colleagues. If why don't we, if we build a parking structure out there so that we can have more urban development, more residential living, more walkability and people able to walk to the train and so forth. And we were to use that big square area out there behind what's now going to be your patio. Is that, are you okay with that?
If I may make a comment related to it. As, as you mentioned, you want to think about the future. And I've also thought about it previous to owning Hearth. I worked in town since 2007. So I've been here for a very long time. And I've seen the town adjust into many different things positively for the community. I believe that allowing outdoor seating for not only my restaurant, but for other restaurants, will increase your foot traffic as a family driven place to live, which is already is there. I think that we will see that people are going to start walking around more, being all over the place. I do think that parking will always be an issue for everyone. I mean, you can make a building a parking and you can't find a parking spot anyway. But how it's created, it will determine how it would affect the businesses around. Because if I am just to answer the question, will that affect me in any way or form? If it does to me, I'm sure that it'll affect many others. So it's the way that it would be planned around and how do we do it? But you know, we always have to adjust.
Great. Thank you.
Doesn't affect my vote tonight anywhere.
Just on the edge of the corner, you just got it in.
You got it.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance on Zoom that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, is there anyone in the hall who wishes to speak to this application? Seeing and hearing none, just to again reiterate, the applicant has submitted an amendment to expand the license premises to include a 650 square foot patio area and seating for 33 patrons and staff with a server station. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the amendment for alteration of premises. Application received from Soul Soul Family Foods LLC doing business as Hearth Pizzeria. Contingent upon final approval of the special permit from the planning board and outdoor dining license from the select board. And if so approved, vote to forward the amendment application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Thank you for that motion, Ms. Cooley. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Just a question for me as far as the planning board process. Have you been to the planning board yet for their approval?
Zoning board, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that was approved. We already received the approval notice. We're just waiting. Now I believe it's 15 days so that I can submit it to deeds and that I'm.
Oh, the ratio of deeds, the 20, yes, the appeal period?
Yep.
Excellent.
They have already approved it based on this.
Okay, that's great. Good view. Okay. Any further discussion? None, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. I see that you are on the agenda. Again, you can sit, can for now the outdoor dining license.
Yeah.
You know, it's bisected here and I know it's just how business gets done. But we just got through with the all alcohol license for the restaurant. Next is a notice public hearing at 6:20. And I'm trying to speak a little slow so that we can get to 6:20 as it is 6:19. So you will be here for the dining license, which is tab four on our agenda. Other than that, is business okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a good time to plug your business. You have terrific pizzas.
It's been good.
That's, that's great.
We have the, the live music on Thursdays and we've started a youth program on Sundays. So like plug Bennett's involved.
Yes.
Native school of rockets involved. So it's these schools that don't have means to perform. So we give them a platform to be able to do so.
That's great. My kids will be playing there, I think, one Sunday coming up.
Yeah.
It's a great, great venue for that. So thanks for doing that for the, for the community. And I remember speaking with you earlier, you've had long-term employees. Is that right at your?
I mean, our longest one has been Brian Anderson, the Anderson family.
Yeah.
12 years working together. And from previous, when it was a previous establishment, it's been the same kitchen, same front of the house. And to reiterate, during COVID, we didn't lay anybody off. So it's been, it's been good.
Great success story. Great. So we are at 6:20 and we are here now for the outdoor dining license. You've already described to us what you're going to be doing with the patio. And I don't know if you have any further comments on this application?
No, it's pretty much as far as what we have before.
Great. And that is again available in our packet and online. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public on Zoom who wishes to speak on the outdoor dining license for Soul Soul Family Foods doing business as Hearth Pizzeria?
Mr. Chair, just to note that the regulations would allow certain dates for outdoor dining. And the restaurant has asked for January 1 to December 31 dining. So that is allowed under your regulation. So there's two motions. So that those are, that is sort of the decision point, whether to allow the outdoor dining and what, what period. So on the second page of the fact sheet, it would be the outdoor dining season or the full year.
So it'll be for the full year you're looking to. And we did have a discussion on that as far as extending the seasons. And I really think it's up to the business and we did, you know, to decide what that window should be. So hopefully we'll get those people. It reminds me, when you go in ski country, people are outside and, you know, December like nothing. And it's trickling here too, right? If we can do it.
So many people asked throughout that like, hey, there's no outside. Can like our family go then there and make something and right now?
That's great. Well, seeing no member of the public on Zoom, is there any member of the public in attendance, in attendance who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Soul Soul Family Foods LLC doing business as Hearth Pizzeria. Contingent upon final approval of special permit from the planning board. It says or, but I think it's.
And.
Right, that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Soul Soul Family Foods LLC doing business as Hearth Pizzeria. Modified to allow for outdoor dining from 1 January 2022 to 31 December 2022 contingent upon final approval of special permit from the planning board.
So the second motion was the full year.
It's only that unique.
Yeah.
All right. So just a second motion, sorry.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here now we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Again, best of luck with your restaurant and in the future in this arrangement. We'll be seeing you soon.
And thank you to the town for being so welcoming to us and helping us out. It's been really, really good to work with you. Thank you.
Well, that's nice to hear. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, town communications update. I see Cindy Roy Gonzalez, our PIO. How are you this evening?
How are you?
Terrific. So you hear discuss an update on looks like five points and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you put up?
It's hard with all this technology between Zoom and.
Let me get on Zoom.
Presentations and. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. So next. Great. So there are a couple of things I wanted to update you all on tonight. And thank you for the opportunity, including sort of the main communications tools that we're using right now. So I wanted to provide you with an update on the website, the mobile app, our polling and surveys, our town newsletter, town meeting member communications, and a quick update on our COVID site. Next slide. So you've seen this image before. This is the mockup of our forthcoming website refresh. As you'll recall, we held two forums back in the fall to solicit input from the community on what they wanted to see in the new website. Since then, we've been continuing to work with Civic Plus, our provider, to clean up the content, update images, make it more searchable. So getting rid of a lot of stuff that we no longer need on the website. As a note, Civic Plus is transitioning to use Google Analytics, which is fantastic because it'll give us a better sense of what people are actually going to the website for and how long they're spending on the website. And then we can make adjustments seasonally and as we see topics being searched to make those items more prominent on the website. So that's exciting. I may have mentioned this before. So with this refresh, we have the opportunity to highlight two departments within town government that are more, that are most searched. So for us, that's park and recreation and public works. And so they will have webpages that look very similar to the way the town's homepage looks. And that allows people to access more information with fewer clicks. So rather than having to dig through the one little, it's called an internal page, rather than having to dig through the internal page to find information, they'll have specific headers at the top. So for example, public works could have water and sewer, RTS, et cetera, et cetera. So just make it easier for people to get to what they're looking for. Our plan is to launch the refreshed site this spring. So my hope is March, April. We're on track in terms of timing with Civic Plus right now. We discussed the last time I was here, making sure that the departments have people who are trained to use the refreshed website. And so I'm happy to say that we've done three trainings and we have one more scheduled for March. So the idea is that there would be at least two staffers in each department that would be able to manage their webpages. So a primary and a backup. And we have, like I said, one more scheduled for March. Next slide.
Cindy, just, I'm sorry, I know there's a lot here. So before we get to the mobile app, any questions on the, the website refresh or discussion? Yes, Mary Ann.
Cindy, I think we canceled the last update with the community on this.
Yes.
So there's not a plan to go back at this point.
There is, once we launched the, because the last one was a, was showing the community the refreshed site. So we did show them the mockup, but we'll come back once we're, you know, we hit go and I'll walk people through the new site.
Okay, thank you.
In the timing, I'm sorry on that, when we expect the refresh.
Spring, March, April, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Okay, mobile app.
Great. So along with our refreshed website, the Civic Plus is providing us with a refreshed mobile app. So you may or may not know, we have a mobile app right now. It's not that useful. So we will have a new mobile app. So this is the mockup they actually provided just this morning. You'll see it's a very simple image, has the town seal. So people can sort of easily find what they're looking for on the App Store, either Apple or Android. And then we're still playing with what buttons we think are the most useful for people. So the calendar is probably really useful, news flashes. So we have the ability to have up to 10 buttons. And once we lock those in, those will be the buttons for a while. So I want to give that a little bit more thought before we move forward with that.
Great. Discussion on the, the mobile app?
It's a good question. I'll check on that.
I think it's great. I saw the pay bills. You can pay bills on the mobile app. I think that'll be terrific for.
Well, what we know is most of the people who are coming to the website, like any website, are doing it on their phone.
Yes.
And so my hope is. And so my hope is that most people will download this app and access our information via that.
I think that's great. Terrific. Not that I'd like to pay any. Marcus?
Yeah. What was the question that Kevin asked? I didn't hear him.
About push notifications, if the app will allow
Okay. Okay, I just get in here. Thank you.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Okay, next item polling.
So I mentioned this the last time I was here. We have entered into a contract with a company called Polco. It's a research-based polling application. We have used it a couple more times since the last time I was here, including partnering with the library. The library is very interested in creating a library of things and wanted to solicit from the community ideas about items to include in the library of things. So that was really successful. It's helping the library figure out, you know, what are their sort of priority items that they want to start with. So that was a great opportunity. The Housing Plan Working Group has also discussed using the the survey application that Polco offers for doing housing plan related surveying of the community. The other big item from Polco is the National Community Survey, which was formerly the National Citizen Survey. The last one was completed in twenty eighteen. We had plans to do another one in twenty twenty as it had been done every two years, but because of COVID, that got pushed off. So we are about to embark on that process. Next month, we'll start working with them to create this report. So if you recall, the National Community Survey is really about the livability of Needham. There are something like five hundred other communities that were benchmarked against. And then we have the option to include a handful of questions that are customized to, to Needham specifically. So that'll start next month. And I want to mention, in addition to the National Community Survey, which we've done every two years, we also have the option of doing another big benchmarking survey in the off years. And so as an example, they offer the National Business Survey, the National Employee Survey, Community Assessment Survey for older adults and others. So we can take a look and see which of those might be of interest in the off years.
Great. And I recall we would get a sample for, because we had, you know, some questions, we can look at that and confirm. Can you just go over again, the topic based polling? Is that done through an email? What's, how is that delivered?
So what happens is the first time someone takes a survey or a poll that we offer and they can, what we've done is push it out on the website, on social media, et cetera. They will go, they'll fill out some information, they become part of our panel.
Okay.
So every time we do a survey on any topic after that, they will get a note asking if they want to participate in the survey. And so over time, theoretically, our panel grows and our reach on any given survey grows. We do have the ability to customize. So if we say, oh, we only want to target library patrons, we could do that. But the idea is you get more and more community engagement over time.
That's great. I think it's so important to engage your community. You know, sometimes the topics we think are critical or important aren't always those topics. So I think that's a great, great benefit. Discussion on polling? Yes, Mary Ann.
The Housing Plan Working Group survey, has that gone out yet?
No, no. It's, it's something we've discussed, but we haven't yet figured out exactly what we want to do with it.
Okay. And have we figured out how to, I know that I was concerned because of the subject line, I think, on the polls. Is there any of that that we figured out how to customize?
Not yet. We have brought it to Polco. They are trying to figure out what is possible. It wasn't a concern they had heard before, but understood the value of being able to receive emails that looked like they were actually from the town. So they are working on it.
Thank you.
As the town manager mentioned at one of our last select board meetings, the newsletter is going great and we are continuing to try to increase readership. Okay.
Okay.
It's like it's right there.
Next slide.
Okay. So if you recall, this was launched in June of twenty one. It gets emailed out weekly, which was not my initial intention, but was popular and we had a lot to say. So it goes out weekly. We're nearing three thousand subscribers and that, every week we get more and more, which is great. It's become really a resource for sharing news and information from the town. But what's nice is since we launched, I get emails every week from people in the community saying, could you share this? Could you share that? And so it's sort of transformed into this resource that's bigger than what I anticipated. And with the Needham Times potentially going away, I think it's really an opportunity for us to, to make it grow. There is a sign up on the homepage. It's right directly in the homepage. So if people are watching.
That's where it is.
And then this, I want to just spend a second on the town meeting member communications. So one of the forums that we held in the fall was specifically around this issue of how do town meeting members and constituents communicate with one another? And, you know, we had batted around the idea of putting out a list of emails for town meeting members. I think there was some concern about people not wanting to share their private emails publicly. And they wanted the town to help facilitate that communication. And so working with both the town clerk and our IT department, we've been able to figure out a way to develop a precinct by precinct contact form. So you'll see as an example, contact Fitzpatrick. Instead, it would say contact precinct A town meeting members. You can go, somebody will fill out their information, they'll put in their question or their comment. That will get, it will get sent directly to all the precinct A members. And so each precinct will have one. We're also trying to figure out if we can also, if we can do this, have one contact all town meeting member list as well. And that would be disseminated to all town meeting members. If a town meeting member wants to respond back to a constituent, they will be able to do that from their own personal email address. But nobody else will see that email address, just the person that is getting the reply.
Okay.
So our goal, because all town meeting members are up for election this year, is to begin that process of publicizing the forums after we have email addresses for all the new town meeting members. It'd be great if we can do it in time for town meeting, given the short turnaround between town election and town meeting. Not likely, but soon after.
Great. I think it's terrific too. That's been questions for the longest since I've been started on the board. How to better communicate. And I think that's a great solution.
This will be good.
I think that's nice. Discussion, Mary Ann?
I'm just thinking, it might be interesting to collect email addresses from the people running now. Might give us a jump.
The town clerk does do that. The only challenge is that some people want a different email address to be their email address that they use to be contacted. But she does have all that information.
Great.
Thank you.
And could we be carbon copied on those questions? Or I guess that would be signed for further discussions so we can. I guess that's maybe something for further discussion on.
I think technically it could happen.
We are at large. I guess if it goes to all, we'd be at large. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on, yes, Dan?
This is good work and two of the things to do. On the town meeting member communications, it's important, I like the way that you've set it up because there are some town meeting members who want to have a lot of interaction with their constituents and others that don't. And I think we sometimes talk about the town meeting as the town's legislative branch, which in a constitutional sense is true. But they're not like elected congresspeople or state legislators who hold themselves out to the public to do this. The only reason we don't have twenty thousand town meeting members is you just can't get them all in a room anymore. So they're representative, but they don't check their rights as private citizens at the door. They don't have to do that to participate. We need to protect that. So the idea that you can have both options available for people, for town meeting members that do want to be actively engaged with constituents, to have that give and take and others not to be involved in it at all, if they don't want, that's important and a good thing to protect. The second is, if only because it gets some people to service town meeting members that might otherwise not be willing to do it. The other thing about the news is the thing to be, yeah, it really is something that ordinary newspapers, weekly newspapers of the kind that we all assume were a basic building block of public information. Not just in Needham, but in all of communities throughout, throughout this area. Seemed to be largely going away or, or shrinking down to be just a shadow of the role that they, of the essential role that they played before. So I do think that our news is going to have to fill a lot of that gap. And the big thing that we had to be careful about is somehow to have a balance. We can't be out editorializing about, you know, how important and right we are about everything, even though but we do have to make sure that people can get the basic information that they need. And we have a lot of it. And so we need to find the right way to deploy that in a way that's timely and fair to, to people that are involved, even when the issues that underlie them are controversial. So I, I'm glad you're doing this and I've, I've read the newsletter with interest and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And that's agreed, I think, by the entire board. Any further discussion?
Yes.
And one more, yeah, just one more slide.
Sorry, let me just go to Marcus and then Marcus?
Thank you. Agreeing with Dan said as well. And I feel like as the newspapers are kind of going away with the Needham Times and not being delivered to everyone, I think people are going to be looking to us more. And like Dan said about even controversial topics, make sure that we're getting our news out there and getting on, you know, informing the people what's going on, you know, within our community since other ways are being taken away or dwindling. And then I just had a question about the contact that a, someone that sends to their precinct and then we can reply. Is, so can every person on, say, precinct A reply to that person? Or are we going to have like a contact person? So will they get like, you know, however, you know, twenty emails or whatever it is? Possibly that many emails? Or will we kind of have it so they're not getting a whole bunch of different answers and different opinions? Is there, do they talk to each other prior? Or would that be an opportunity for the respond to a constituent? Or just kind of just clarification on what that would look like?
Yeah. So to answer your question, yes, they could receive as many replies as there are members in a precinct. It's not, for us to sort of appoint someone to reply, we heard from people in the forum we held on this topic that they didn't want a precinct captain per se. And that people really wanted the opportunity to respond individually.
Really? Okay. I just want the public to understand why we're not doing that. So thank you for explaining that because, you know, that could be seemed as, okay, I'm getting a hundred replies, but there's a reason for that in a process in which that we're taking, you know, for those reasons. So thank you for explaining.
Sure.
Back here. Yes.
As long as we're on. Are, are the town meeting messages, stuff like that, those are part of the public record? Right?
Yeah. So they, so messages right now, sorry, messages right now that go to town meeting members come from the town clerk. So she's the entity responsible for communicating to and with town meeting.
And those would probably be archived after, for whatever purpose.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what wouldn't be though is, and town meeting members are not subject to that legal law. So if a town meeting member uses her own email to send an answer, that's not an archive of the town.
Okay.
But if they fill out this form with a comment or a question, that would be
That's a public record. And yeah, you have each town meeting members individually elected. So you have a lot of individual opinions out of that precinct and that's part of town meeting. Dan?
And in terms of the idea of someone getting a lot of replies, well, when we think of it as public communications, that's one thing, but they're not really, as it said, individual town meeting members are not subject to the public records law. It's, they are speaking as a citizen that you meet, meet in the supermarket. And if somebody, if someone gets, it's like, it's actually almost like the old days. Send a letter. It's like your letter to the town meeting members or a letter to the editor. You might get a lot of responses. You might get none. You might get something in between from your, from your neighbors. And that's part of, should be part of the process. So hopefully it would be positive. I, good idea.
I think so as well. Okay, Cindy, another?
Yep, just the final slide here on COVID nineteen communications. So to take you back to early twenty twenty, we had done a daily update to the community. It was an email blast. We also at the same time created a new website dedicated to our COVID nineteen updates. In twenty twenty one, as things changed, we transitioned to weekly updates. We maintained the COVID nineteen website and added to it this dashboard that you see on the slide to give some really concrete Needham specific case data. From June of last year until now, when we launched the town newsletter, we started to include those COVID nineteen updates in the town newsletter. We know that there are nearly three thousand people who received that newsletter. And that was really the best way for us to get out any kind of COVID nineteen updates. At the same time, we maintain this dashboard on the COVID nineteen site. So today, I am planning to migrate away from the COVID specific, COVID specific website because it's not being used right now as a, a tool for updating the way that the newsletter has been. The, so as we sort of move into this hopefully endemic phase of COVID, we're going to move all that information onto the public health page where it really is most appropriate. We will migrate that dashboard to that dashboard will live right on the public health page. I think that is the most interesting thing for people. And then we'll continue with the updates through the newsletter and those updates will also exist on the public health page. Before I make that transition, I will let people know via the website and via the newsletter that that'll be happening. But again, the, the COVID website itself has become a less useful tool than some of the other tools that we're using. So that'll happen in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Questions on that? No? All right. Cindy, thank you very much for the update, for all your work. Look forward to seeing the progress and the work products.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next item on the agenda, town manager. First subitem, housing choice designation. Katie, how are you?
Great. How are you?
Nice to see you.
Good to see everyone. So I am here to talk about housing choice designation. As you know, at the state level, the Baker-Peuto administration has kind of an umbrella called Housing Choice Initiative. It is actually a number of strategies under that umbrella. So this designation, before I dive into what it is, I'll just say what it isn't. It is not the DHCD zoning around multifamily housing and MBTA stops. That's something else under that umbrella, but separate from this. So the housing choice designation is an opportunity for municipalities to get designated at the state level based on what the housing production has been over the prior five years. So it's looking backwards. And the benefit of getting designated is two things. First, designated communities get exclusive access to one particular state grant called the Housing Choice Grant. This is both funds for zoning and planning, but it's also funds for major infrastructure projects. So you can do water sewer, you can do roadway reconstruction, just things that support housing in a community. The second benefit of designation is that there are a number of other state grant programs where you get preferential treatment. So bonus points basically on your application if you are designated as a housing choice community. Those grant programs include Mass Works, Complete Streets, the Mass dot capital program, and then land and park grants, which is around acquiring conservation and recreation land. And there's a handful of others. So really, that's the benefit of getting the designation is just access and opportunity to additional state funds. I'll say for Needham, thinking about the timeline, the look back is five years. And we're coming up to really seeing this as our last opportunity to apply to have the units at the Kendrick and the Modare account. And so with that reality of the timeline and also the state changed the program this year. So the designation lasts five years into the future. So if we apply this year and get designated, it gives us these opportunities and benefits for the next five years till twenty seven. So with that, I'll see if there's any questions and our recommendation is to ask the board to approve our applying for the designation.
Yes, Dan? For the Housing Choice Designation. And then if I could be heard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, good. I'm glad that you did the work. And I knew one of the questions about the program with whether or not we were still able to qualify based on the the Madera and Kendrick. So I'm glad to see that that's so. Appreciate you putting the work into it. See what we can do with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess my just initial question, is there any downside? Is it different communities because they don't have the look back might have a negative to it? Or is it what would be a downside to it? It just seems very positive.
I don't think there is a downside. It's really just an incentive or reward. So you know, if a community knows they'll never get there, they might not bother putting in the application. But I don't think there's a downside.
Good. Thank you. Mary Ann?
And I just sort of wondered why we didn't do it previously.
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough. Any further?
Then we're all at sign us up.
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion. In a second, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes, yes, that is unanimous. Thank you.
The next item, we have several items to talk about under the American Rescue Plan funding, but I would ask Katie and Amy to go first to talk about.
Yes.
Projects that they're using.
And how are you?
Yeah, well, you.
Nice to see you. All right. So the floor is yours. Kate, go right ahead.
Sure. So here I am, a couple of months later, after we had the discussion and you voted in support of designating three hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA funds for the Small Business Recovery Grant Program. And I'm back to report that we had thirty applications for the grant in the initial round, which was really exciting. A couple of them unfortunately did not qualify for one reason or another, based on the criteria that we had set forth. But I am here to present a list of twenty eight businesses that applied for the funding and in the handout that you should have received. It lists the business name, how much they asked for, and the purpose of the funds. There was a panel or a group, I should say, of myself and three of my colleagues from different departments that we met to discuss the applications. And we reviewed very closely the tax returns that were submitted along with the application material. So very close meticulous review and discussion. And we're very pleased to present this list for your consideration and vote this evening.
Great. Thank you for that. Would you say if we do another round, if you could just tell us, are there were there barriers that you felt that were up that we can remove or certain categories that we might want to consider for if we did another round?
If we did another round, I'd like to explore the possibility of allowing for nonprofits to apply. They were not part of the criteria for this round. And there were some nonprofits that had heard about the program and had reached out to me. And I had to let them know that they did not meet the criteria. So I think that that's something that should be considered for round two. Beyond that, I think would be that's me, it would be up for discussion would be, as far as I understand, now the final ARPA rule allows for certain sectors to be considered eligible. So we could talk about the possibility of, you know, all restaurants or all retail or all certain types of businesses that were adversely impacted through the pandemic to be automatically qualified, should they meet other criteria as well.
That's great. Great feedback. Thank you. Discussion on this item. Yes, Mary Ann?
Well, and I think I'm just looking, I'm not seeing the list again of the awardees in the packet that I've got.
It's on the consent agenda.
It's on the consent agenda. Okay, so the.
Do you want my list?
It doesn't matter. So what I would observe is that it was a number, in fact, of restaurants and predominantly restaurants and retail organizations in town. And for many, the grant was a ten thousand dollar grant from the town, which, you know, I think for people who are out there who have been struggling through the pandemic is something for sure.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So the breakdown is there was twelve restaurants that qualified for the grant. And we also had three health clubs, gyms, five retail, one bowling alley, and you could probably guess who that is, two dentists, three services, meaning tailor, embroidering, painting, printing, that sort of thing. And then some, you know, the others fell into sort of the other category. But primarily, they were restaurants that applied for these grants.
And I've spoken with some of them, and they're just thankful that, you know, every dollar means so much to them. And I really appreciate all the work that you've done getting this together and review and that. Marcus?
Yes, echo that, you know, just appreciate all the work and diligence that went into all of this. I had a question. Did anyone ask for more than the ten thousand dollars or anything like that? Because I know we discussed it. If anybody, you know, came to us a proposal for more, then that's something we would discuss. But it sounds like no one did, correct?
No one asked for more than ten thousand.
Okay, just wondering. Yeah, I just I know we mentioned it a while back.
Great. Thank you much, Mary Ann.
And Amy, have we actually sent out the notifications now? And I know that the notifications had been delayed initially. So have people been notified of the award?
They have not. I was waiting for this discussion and vote this evening.
Great. That's right. So again, it's a terrific opportunity for them, and it's a well needed. So thank you. I know we voted that already on the consent agenda. So we'll get those notices out and appreciate it.
Great. And Katie, do you just want to talk about the changes in the economic development section of our proposed revised funding?
Yep, happy to. So way back when ARPA funds first came out, we had brought to you five hundred thousand dollars worth of economic development programs that we thought might be eligible. Now that the final ARPA rule is out, and we continue to say that the projects were actually proposing to reallocate the funds for the pop-up program, that's the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, ten thousand for music art festivals, and twenty thousand for business center marketing support, to reallocate those staying within the economic development bucket, but to utilize towards a second round of small business grants of the board supportive of that. These programs we found to likely not be ARPA eligible. And so we just want to utilize them in a in a more appropriate way.
So that money, as we see on our spreadsheet, will go into the other bucket of TBD? Is that how we're going to handle that reallocation?
Yes, and we could come back with a.
Yes.
A framework of a round two for grant program.
That would be terrific. Great. Yeah, I guess the understanding from what I'm hearing, some of that wasn't eligible, because I know as a board, we were supportive of those categories. So but we get what we get and see what we can do with that that money. So great. Discussion on that item. Okay, further discussion on this?
A few other items that we have submitted under the Walker Pond category two construction and the town reservoir cleanup construction to Norfolk County for the grant funds that we have through the Norfolk County allocation. And so they're working through their process with us. So we're hoping to find out. We had submitted them, I think I told the board I had sent them, and they had said that both of those projects were acceptable. So we're just working through all the paperwork and all the legal requirements and should have information on those in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
The other item, just a couple other items under this category.
Yes.
That we have included in your packet are, county department has set up a tracking system to show what we've expended. And so whenever the board votes to reallocate, the funding proposal will reallocate those corresponding sections so that you can track it. And you can see, for instance, that we had a budget for contact tracers of sixty thousand, and we've spent seventeen thousand, twelve hundred and fifty. So I want to make sure the board has, we'll probably have this update essentially every meeting until we have no more ARPA money to spend. So just so that you're up you're up to date on that. With respect to the funds for the COVID test kits, superintendent reports that they started distributing the kits on January twenty eighth to students and staff. They have they have also received some tests from the Commonwealth. So they have both the funds, the ones that were acquired through the town and through the Commonwealth. They've distributed thirty four thousand seven hundred and eighty tests to staff and students. That's forty three hundred and forty individuals, which is sixty four percent of the students and seventy six percent of staff participating. And he reports that people are joining the program every day. So that number was as of February eighteen. So there we report on that. And since the launch of the program, they've had fifteen individuals who notified staff that they tested positive. So who would have been in school without without having had that test, they would have been in school. They're also running the symptomatic testing during the school day. So they're continuing to run that program. So I'll get you another update on this program within a month.
Great.
With respect to on the town side, nine hundred test kits have been distributed to town employees. We've provided two test kits with four tests each to full time and one test kit to some of the people who work less than full time. Five hundred surgical masks to the center at the Heisman Library so that they have masks on hand when people come in. And we've also providing K ninety five masks for staff that we did run into some supply chain issues on K ninety five masks. So we're triaging the departments that those have been sent to, but everybody will get them. And the final report on status is that Youth and Family Services has filled the position of the ARPA funded full time clinician. And so Kelsey Nichols has been appointed to that position. And so we're great that some grateful that some of these things are moving forward. And Youth and Family Services expects that that position will have a big impact on the waiting list for services. And then finally, Mr. Chair, the request to the board with respect to the administrative.
Yes.
Aspect of the ARPA funding is that the there is a section in the interim, the final rule from Treasury that allows each direct recipient to claim a one time loss revenue of ten million dollars. Now, in the county, which received one hundred and thirty seven million, they've only got ten million in order to distribute as this, because they are the direct recipient and the towns are some recipients, except for the largest towns and cities. They the county is actively exploring with our congressional delegation whether that makes sense, because it does treat municipalities and counties that are existing and doing the work at a bit of a disadvantage in some communities' eyes to those who are non-existent counties. And many of the communities in Norfolk County had been counting on actual revenue loss that they had calculated, which was part of the interim rule. So, for instance, if you have a community nearby that had a four million dollar actual revenue loss, the amount that the county is going to be able to give to each individual community isn't going to be able to match that. So the county, the new county director and the county commissioners are working with congressional delegation to see if that is truly what the intent was. It's a this is a man of duty. All that having been said, the town under the Commonwealth pass through is the direct recipient. So the town has the opportunity to claim as a one time revenue loss up to ten million dollars. Our entire allocation is in the three million dollar range. But the benefit of us asking for it as revenue loss is that there's an administrative burden on us in terms of the staff time it's going to take to report to the Commonwealth, all of these expenditures. And because it is it's it's legitimate into the Treasury final rule that we can get the essentially the two tranches of our state allocation as pure revenue loss, it goes into the same grant fund. And our request to you is to authorize us to request it that way, but to spend it exactly in accordance with the plan that you have adopted and that you continue to revise. And so it's an administrative ease on the staff and achieves the exact same result. And it would only be for items that are ARPA eligible and that the board has approved. It's a little bit complicated, but it's it's we felt that even though it's complex, it was worth the effort in order to make sure that just an easier that we nobody, everybody makes a mistake on occasion, and we won't get tripped up because that revenue loss is is a given.
Makes sense. Great. Thank you. Marcus?
Yes, I was just going through it and looking at the the position for the project manager over the four years. I assume that's going to be the same person that we appointed for four years. And if it goes further than that, we have to dip into the the town's budget? Or how would that be allocated if we do that? I know it's a ways away, but just thinking out loud.
Certainly. We've advertised that as a temporary position so that it would only be temporary to the extent that we have ARPA funding for it, or we put it in the regular budget process through the the annual process, goes through the finance committee, you'd have to go to town meeting. So there are unless there are other positions that become vacant and we make swaps, this is a temporary position, and it could only be funded through those four years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marcus. And again, just getting our heads around the loss revenue, just as far as administrative, it's kind of a lump, it's a lump sum instead of having to every item trying to pass through and show how we spent it. But again, we're going to use it for the things that the board has approved and future things to come.
And we'll report essentially every meeting, at least every month.
Great. Thank you for that. Is there a motion that the board vote to approve the updated ARPA funding proposal and to authorize the town manager to seek funding, the Commonwealth has lost revenue to be used only for items that are ARPA eligible and as approved by the select board on the American Rescue Plan Act funding proposal? Is there a motion?
Move.
You have a motion, Marcus? Or second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes, yes, that is unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we went over the calendar. So next, what annual town meeting warrant?
This is the time of year where we have the warrant on the agenda every meeting. It's been the board's position in the past that when there's an open seat, positions on warrant articles are taken after the election. So expect a lot of voting on articles of this, the two meetings in April. But again, we will have presentations in March because the calendar just doesn't allow it. So we do have the CPC coming in in on March eighth, and we've invited in for April, the citizens petitioner. And we also have in April, the schools and PBVC on the Emory Grover. So if there are other items, we'll go over all of them as you take them up. But if there's anything in particular that you want more information for, please just let me know. Just this warrant, which is dated the eighteenth, the a couple of changes from the prior warrant, the planning board has asked that the brewery zoning article be put in the special town meeting warrant because they didn't, they needed a little more time to make that happen. And the finance committee's voted budget and the finance committee met last week and recommended that funding for the diversity equity inclusion program, the Needham Community Council on Arts and Culture, and the NIPD's funding all be included in the operating budget as rather instead of in warrant articles. And that makes a lot of sense to to us. And so we recommend that too. So no action on the warrant unless there are questions. And then this will be back at your next meeting.
It will be. Mary Ann?
And Kate, again, I just wanted to check to see if the select board candidate understands the future agendas that we have as they relate to the warrant.
I'll make sure. But yes.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions on the warrant? Seeing none, Town Manager report.
Just one item is something that I know that we've discussed with the board before, but it's coming up on March first, our first connections props and community discussion series on the history of policing then and now, which is seven o'clock to eight thirty PM on March first, currently scheduled at the Center at the Heights, although I think there's some discussion about whether that location may change. So more to follow on that. But just to remind people, well, registering is encouraged.
Great. Thank you. And that'll do it, right, on your report? Great. Thank you for that, Kate. Next item, Board Discussion, Public Participation in Meetings Policy Review. I put this on the agenda, as you know, prior to us adopting this policy, we had a different method for the public to communicate with the board, which was much more informal. It did not require a quorum of the board to hear the public. And I there was more time, depending on when members got here, than the three minutes that we've allocated for people to come in. I would like to step back from this policy and think about either at a future meeting or at a goals meeting, a different way to hear from the public. I've been asked if office hours might be more appropriate, if it might be more appropriate to go back to the informal method that we had prior, or if there's some other method to make sure that when we do hear from the public, it's just done kind of more efficiently and not so much under the gun at the beginning of a meeting when we have a packed agenda. So I guess my request this evening is to kind of table the public comment periods moving forward until we have a discussion. until we have a discussion as a board on a better way to handle public comments and make sure that the public is heard at the right opportunity and heard fully. So I don't know if there was any comments from members of this board on that question. Marcus?
Yeah. So if we do that, until that period, we have a discussion to determine what we're going to do. Does that mean there's no public comment until then? Or they still have the ability, I just, I feel like taken away completely between now and then kind of defeats the purpose of having some, something in place, at least until we can figure out a more concrete and efficient way to do it. Or am I, am I getting that wrong as far as?
Right. I think in the interim, as we said prior, it was done different. I just think that the current public comment, they can of course email the board, have discussions with members. I know certain members are holding office hours or having forums. The current way that we have it, it's my opinion, is just not effective when you have three minutes per person rushing to speak and, you know, having to have a full quorum. I've heard from some people who have spoken that some things that they wanted to discuss with the board have been more personal in nature and didn't realize that it was televised. Others, you know, might want to share it in a different form than they are now. So it's not to cut out public comment, but there was a time during COVID, I think for about a year, we didn't have any public comment period. It's just easing back into finding the correct way, I think, to have the best public comment. But that's why we're having a discussion tonight to see how members feel about, about having the public comment period in this, in this forum. And Dan?
Yeah, I think we, I guess my suggestion is keep the current system until you make the change. What, what we're doing currently is a new policy that was intended to kind of improve. But every, every change, you gain something and you lose something. The old policy had real problems, I think, because of the fact that it really almost predated current interpretations of open meeting and public notice laws and so on. And the new, as you've said, it has its own issues. Some of the concerns that I have, and I'm only mentioning them because it's something to think about of how we could get to something better.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think members of the public do like to have the idea of some, some kind of informality and the fact that it's on TV is maybe an issue, but maybe something should be on TV and some, and some maybe not. It always concerns me that people frequently come in asking for information about things that where the town actually has the information, but because there's no notice of what the person is coming in to talk about, information isn't there in the room to, to answer their question. And that, that troubles me a little bit. There's also a, there have been instances, although I think they've been dealt with very well under the new policy where a, a citizen comes in and not understanding some of the rules applicable to what you are allowed to say about other people who live in the town without them being notified or, or present. And sometimes the things that get said in those situations are not fair or even not true. There really needs to be some thinking about how to manage that. And then in the way that the in the policy is written, it kind of discourages the members from commenting on things that, that, that a member of the public comes in and says. And, and I understand the reason for that, which is that individual members don't have authority to speak for the board and you don't want to get into a big back and forth argument in an informal conversation. But sometimes a member of the public comes in, they just want to know, part of it is that they're being heard. And if there's a simple opinion that can be expressed by one member or even different opinions by different members, to have some response at the table may be appropriate. So I don't think there's a special solution to any of those because whatever you do probably causes some other problem. But if we keep the current policy for a while, then a future board will have an opportunity to think it over and maybe improve it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's good for you to say. I just remember, you know, a longer time allocated. And I think people were able to say more to the board and maybe it's, again, starting earlier, but there, if there ideas, I guess, it asks for the board to submit them to the town manager. And that's something we can have at a future discussion on, on how we can move forward the better, better public comment period. Kevin?
Yeah, I think there's a better way we should find it, but I'm worried about the timeline and how long it may take. And I think we need to keep a mechanism in place until that time reach the divana of public comments. So I keep it as inadequate as it may be, I would think it would be a bad look if we got rid of it. And so we're not talking to anyone until we find a perfect way. So
Okay.
let's not have perfection be the enemy of good.
Right. And I guess the idea would be if we were to remove it was to be a short period of time to get kind of narrow it down. But if we think it's going to be a longer period and more input, then we can keep it in place. And again, the idea is to actually hear in a more direct and efficient manner that I think is being done now, especially we put the clock up here and it's very limited what people can say and what we can ask. So any further discussion? Yes, Mary Ann?
We just always remind people that they can email selectboard@needhamma.gov. And we read all of those and we do discuss them. So
Yes.
Always an option.
So any further comments we can submit to the town manager? And then of course, we can discuss at a future meeting or at a goal setting session. So thank you for everybody's comments. Committee reports? None? Next item on the agenda is an executive session, exceptions three and six. I ask if there is a motion to go into executive session under three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do so declare, if you consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate, the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares of not to return to open session. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Roll call, Kevin?
Yay.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we'll go into executive session. Good night, everybody.